We do expect you to dance though.
Is there room for Jim and Asha? So are you on the second one?
Mr. Palasanti, did you watch the goat last night?
No.
That's what they call Tom Brady. The goat is the greatest of all times.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's 4:00 P.M. I'm opening the regular meeting of the Citrus County School Board, and Mr. Doug Dodd has our opening exercises.
All right, thank you. I'm having a chair. And welcome, everyone, to our December board meeting. And we are happy to see a full house here today. So I know we've got some presentations. And we have a special group here to open us up today. But before we do that, we are going to have our prayer and our usual pledge. And I've asked Pastor Daryl Rushing from the First Assembly of God Church here in Emress, he's the lead pastor, to come and open us up and we're a prayer. And Pastor Rushing, right after you pray, if you don't mind, stay in there. And we'll all stand, and then we'll have the pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the privilege of being here today and offering this prayer. I got here early today, and one lady came and greeted me. And she said, I said, "I'm here to pray today." Well, she said, "Don't you pray every day?" "I got my lecture." Then we pray. Father, we count it a privilege to be here today and offer prayer to you and ask your guidance as we go into this meeting. We are so thankful for our leadership here in Citrus County, especially our school board superintendent, Sam Himmel, and all the school board members, Lord. We ask you, as they transact business today, that you would give them wisdom and knowledge and give them an understanding heart and help them to know what they're supposed to do. I pray that you would bless all of our teachers, our principals, our students, our workers, and each and every one that has a part in Citrus County school system. I pray that all of these teachers and workers will find fulfillment, Lord, in their service in our county. I know, Lord, we do a better job when we find fulfillment. Help us all in our struggles, trying to help those struggling students. Give us an understanding heart, how to meet their needs, Lord. That's our objective. And I ask you, Father, to pray to help us do, that you will keep us as we pray and protect us from school violence, from gun violence, and from anyone who wants to induce harm to our students or a person. Ask you to help us to provide an environment so each student can excel in their work. We thank you for what we're about to do, and we're trusting that you will give us the guidance to do it. And we thank you for it, Father. We ask it in Jesus' precious name, and everybody say, "Amen." And God bless you.
All right, if they want to please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pastor Rushing, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So board members, I've asked Mrs. Collins and her group from Emress Primary School, the IPS course, to come and sing a couple songs. They had a great concert this week. And I was able to be there at the school for that. And they just did a wonderful job. Obviously, they couldn't bring the entire choir, but Mrs. Collins has a good group of representation of students here. And we're so proud of them. They look so good. And they're going to sound just as good as they look, let me tell you. But I do want to say this. I've got a little connection to the Collins family. Susan's father, Bill Collins, was one of my teachers at Emress Middle School, taught me science. And as a matter of fact, Susan taught me how to swim. So she taught me swimming lessons. They had a home out here on 41, just north of Emress. And they had a pool, and that's where I learned to swim as a young child. And so they're dear to my heart. And I appreciate those teachers at Emress Primary School. That's the school where I attended, and I have a lot of great memories there. And so, Mrs. Collins, if you would, go ahead and bring your group up. If you'd like to say anything, you're more than welcome to.
Hi. Not knowing how much time is in the cap, even though Doug said it was impossible to do two songs, you still decided to do one because it's a little long. Okay. This is "All I Want for Christmas Is a Dinosaur."
All I want for Christmas is a dinosaur. Santa, if you'll bring me one, I'll never ask for more. They're missing from the catalogs, they're not in any store. I'm asking for a simple dinosaur. I kept my bedroom clean most of all year long. My folks couldn't even see the floor where all my stuff belongs. At last I see the wisdom it has brought out on the lawn. My dinosaur can sleep upon my bed where he belongs. All I want is a dinosaur's tracks. Or a stegosaurus would fit in the closet. Perhaps a woolly mammoth for the bathtub would do, would do. Oh, I moved the green sleeping mattress into the closet. All the health department people do adore it. Why can't I just ask for lots of toys like other girls and boys? Jingle, jingle, jingle bells, squirrels, and to say, it's filled with toys for all the kids to open Christmas Day. The sleigh is very heavy, the flight is a show. Purses on the sack I see a few are to ignore. Gee, I can't believe it, we found my dinosaur. All I want for Christmas is a dinosaur. Santa, if you'll bring me one, I'll never ask for more. It's the best in the catalog, and I'll do really well. My mattress is a simple dinosaur, would do. Oh, I better pick a guy to put it outside to the closet. Not a problem, I don't care if he snores. However, don't bring it on my ziller. The little ones sleep upon my pillow. All I want for Christmas is a dinosaur.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. That was excellent. Big job, guys. We have in our audience our new Commissioner, Brian Coleman. Why don't you stand and wave to everybody? Thank you for being here. Okay, adoption of the agenda is recommended by the superintendent?
We approve.
Second.
Okay, one of the two. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do you have any citizens' comments? Anybody have any comments that pertain to our agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We approve consent agenda.
No motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Ms. Veronique, we have the recognition of donations. Thank you.
On today's agenda, we have several donations. Granted, sponsored by the Citrus County Education Foundation, donated $22,363 to the member of 2016. A $1,000 donation to Citrus High School and the Setway Museum of Thirteenth Hall of Fame. $500 donation to Christopher Middle School and Crystal River Car Company. A $1,250 donation to Kent High School for Law, the law offices of the Doja. An $800 donation to Kent High School and Citrus Oil and Financial Surgery DA. $500 donation to Kent Primary School and Exxon Mobil.
Thank you, and thanks to all of our donations. Appreciate that. Okay, we've got some 4:00 P.M. recognition, and it's just 10 after 4:00.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Gardner. This afternoon, I have the pleasure of welcoming Rocks to join us. We are recognizing several of our schools who accepted the challenge to go in row with their students as part of a fundraising event. So to share more information with you on that, I'd like to welcome Chris McCowen, who is Vice President of Rocks, to share the details and present the awards.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm not sure if I can follow up my act as well.
That's a hard act. That's a hard act of all.
Oh, great. Good acting. First, I want to thank the Citrus County Board, the school board, for their time and allowing us to present this today. We're here today, as Scotty said, to recognize the schools and representatives that participated in the third annual Don't Rock the Boat event. We're here for us, and we're a good thing. Let's see, the Royan Organization of Citrus County for Rocks, as we go by. We were formed in 2002, right here in Emress. Our boat house, which we're on a more popular topic, we will show across your heart. We were created to present the port of the age of Royan to our middle school and high school students. And we have been an active part of the development of our students themselves. The Don't Rock the Boat event was perceived as an opportunity to build and reinforce relationships between us, the schools, our communities, our students, and our teachers. We'd like to thank the teachers and staff of the Emress Middle School, the Fort River Middle School, Citrus Springs Middle School, and Emress Primary School for their participation in this year's event and extended invitation to all Citrus County schools to join us in this day and this time. We also want to thank the Citrus County Education Foundation, the Citrus County Education Association, the private donors, staff, and members of Rocks who all made this possible. Now, what we came here for, a presentation of prizes. All three schools that participated were outstanding. And in our eyes and you mean his eyes, they're all winners. Importantly, there's only one first place winner in the contest. We thought of recognizing Emress Primary School. They raffled off three learn-the-role practices. Three of their students were recipients of that process. Our number three first place winners, I don't know if you see, taken home $100 cash prize, plus an additional $140 that they raised through in-school ticket sales. That went to Fort River Middle School. Is it a story volume easier to tell that? Okay, our second place winners, taking home $200 cash prize and additional $157 from in-school ticket sales. And also a matching $157 as the team's spirit award. That goes to Emress Middle School. Our first place winners, taking home a $200 cash prize and the fabulous trophy that Mr. General Harry is holding for their efforts, that goes to Citrus Springs Middle School.
It's all right. I would like to recognize the rowers. Yes, it's Mike Perselli, Alyssa Mayer, Hannah Clark, who's with us today, and Ron Barrett. They also rode the boat. We also had our two students over there, Jack and Alyssa.
Madison.
Madison.
Do we have any other student rowers that were here? Come on out. Come on, come on.
Okay, guys. Okay, guys, rowers, let's go. Out the door.
Why didn't you, when they said, "Anybody else"?
Why didn't you? Hold on, hold on. Get everybody back up here.
After Maddie, go back.
What, did I just take over this?
I said it like. I messed up.
I'm going to tell you guys, Mr. Dodd got drafted into IMS team.
It's not easy rowing and boats either. A lot of respect for those students out there.
All right, thank you, guys.
The next time somebody says, "If there's anyone else..." The next time anybody says, "If there's anyone else", you stand up.
Rob, you rode in this, if I recall, didn't you?
Yeah.
Next, we have Citrus County Schools, who ranked the top 10% in the state in various areas of the 2016 state assessments. Amy Crowell.
The projector doesn't seem to be working, so I'm handing out coming around. 14 of our Citrus County schools recently received a personally signed note from Governor Rick Scott, thanking them for their hard work and congratulating them for ranking in the top 10% of schools statewide regarding their 2015-16 state assessments. So, I mean, all Florida schools were ranked by the percent of students scoring satisfactory or higher on their English Language Arts, which is their ELA, Mathematics, and Science, as well as improvement in ELA and Mathematical Achievement from the 14, 15, 16 school year to the 15, 16. So each of these areas were ranked in, I believe there was one, two, three, four, four to five categories. One, where they were ranked among all Florida schools, no matter if you were elementary, middle, or high. Then they were ranked among grade-specific schools. So all elementary ranked against each other, all middle, all high, and then also combination schools as well. Then they ranked among all Title I schools, and that's elementary, middle, and high, just all of them lumped together. And then when they were compared with charter schools. So if you were a charter school, like AES, we have one of those in our ranking here that did get in the top 10%, they were ranked among the other charter schools. So the chart that I just gave you lists the 14 schools that ranked in the top 10% in at least one category. As you can see, the majority of these 14 schools did rank in the top 10% in more than just one category. But if they were in just one category, they received this honor from the governor. And we did put a press release out, so this was in our newspaper as well. But we definitely wanted to congratulate these schools. As you can see, 10 of our elementary schools are in this list. Central Ridge, Crystal River, Floral City, Forest Ridge, Hernando, Homasasa, Emress, Locanto, Pleasant Grove, and Rock Crusher. We had two middle schools, Crystal River and Locanto. And then in our high schools, we had Locanto High and the Academy of Environmental Science. And as you can see, as you go across, you see the different categories. All schools in Florida, we're talking around 3,200 schools, if they were in the top 10%, you see their ranking in the chart there. Notice those in yellow? The state didn't recognize those. That is just something Citrus County did when we were doing our numbers. We saw that, you see those in yellow, of schools that ranked in the top 5% in those categories. So that's even more noteworthy. And as you can see, where we really excelled is when we were compared to the other Title I schools amongst the state. And we've always said that about Citrus County, that, you know, we are that, you know, we kind of don't fit the mold. And you really do see that here, how we rise to the top even when we have circumstances that other schools have as well. So, as you can see, and I wish I had a display so everybody else here can also see it, but like I said, it was in the newspaper as well. I don't want to go for each, you know, talk about each one, but just to honor these 14 schools for such a great achievement. We're not sure if this is going to be something that is done every year. This was something new this year, this recognition from Governor Scott. But we can definitely crush these numbers from now on and boast ourselves.
Amy, some principals have enlarged that letter from Governor Scott and put it in the workroom and thanked their...
Their staff.
Their staff, yes.
Absolutely. And I mean, I believe that that's even, the handwritten note on there is thanking not only the principal, but to your staff for such a wonderful job. Absolutely. And they posted it on, I've seen it on Twitter, I've seen it on Facebook. You know, just, they should be very proud. I mean, this was a definite accomplishment.
Thank you. Okay, school operations.
Good afternoon, school board members. With me this afternoon to share some information with you and possibly get your approval for the HPV vaccine to be administered to our middle school students, I have Ernest, who goes by Tito Rubio, the Health Officer for the Department of Health Citrus, and also Janora Wade, the Community Health Nursing Director, who works very closely with Pam Cornavalli to provide services for our students. They have a short PowerPoint they'd like to share with you.
We came from here. Oh, yeah, we've been there when nothing, you know. Best plans, right? It don't work, so. But what you have in front of you is what we'd like to check with you today. And we're going to show you some evidence about where Citrus County is with HPV vaccination rates. And what we think as the County Health Department and your Health Officers of the county that we may be able to increase our vaccination rate. As you know, HPV is a disease that causes cancer. And now we do have a vaccine, which is really a case prevention vaccine. There are very few that exist in the world. And we'd like to have more children in our county vaccinated. If you go to the first page I was going to show you was a slide of the Merck commercials. You've probably seen them on TV. It's Mom Did You Know, Dad Did You Know? Second page is, it gives you some idea of how widespread cancers are from HPV infections, there's 40 million infections each year. As you can see down there, the different cases that can be prevented by this disease, by each section of which cancer you're looking at there. Those are actually preventions. These people have the vaccination, they wouldn't get the cancer, they wouldn't be infected with COVID. The next paragraph is the Florida HPV vaccination rate. This was a snapshot of 2014. The state of Florida vaccination rate, combined for men and women, or boys and girls, is 49%. Healthy People 2020, which is the standard that we try to meet to, recommends for communities to have 90% vaccination rate. The state of Florida has said it goes for us to be a 2020 by 80% vaccination. So as a state, we're still likely to be hot. And that's that first graphic we have right here. The next graphic I show you, we wanted to look at who is getting a vaccination and what age group, between ages of 11 and 17, for the last three years, 13, 14, 15. But this bar graph shows you, this total of students in that age group that were vaccinated, and how many of those were vaccinated for the first vaccine of HPV. Where you see that small orange, those are only people that got HPV. The 11 and 12-year-olds, we should have that as a solid. So you see, a very small percent is getting vaccinated. And that goes through as they increase age, 14, 15, 16, and 17. That's why we have the evidence. Now, what we did in the next slide is we just broke that down. So you see the same data, broken down between men and women. And you'll see basically that here in Citrus County, in any given year, we're about 18%. 18% of our children are vaccinated today. So a large percent of our children, as they grow old... So, a large percent of our children, as they grow old, are exposing themselves to cancer as they grow up, and are no longer necessarily exposed to it. What we'd like to do is to get your permission and change a little bit of what we already do. We already go into schools now and vaccinate 11-year-olds, sixth grade.
And the sixth grade, yes.
And we bring the T-DAP with us, because that's a mandatory vaccination that's required by state for when you're in the sixth to seventh grade. What we like with your permission is to bring in HPV vaccination with us. So, what we're going to do a little bit more next year, we're proposing is that, first of all, we'll offer the HPV vaccine when we offer the T-DAP. The Citrus staff, Citrus County Health Department staff, will do all the vaccination. We won't use any school health nurses. We want to exercise our MRC, we want to exercise some of our community partners that we can use, which is EMS by State of Florida. Staff uses a lot of EMS to work with Florida Department of Health, to vaccinate, and we'd like to bring in our partners and exercise our partnership with ourselves. So we think we can do that with them, and our school health nurses, with our community forces, getting those consent form out to parents, if they're still not consenting. If they say no, then we're vaccinated, it's their choice, but we like to give them the opportunity anyway, and we think that's a good time for them to do it. Now, the other thing we'd like to say is that, just recently, HPV for 11 and 12-year-olds used to be a series of three vaccinations, now it is two vaccinations. So, by giving their first dose, when they go from the sixth to seventh grade, and the county health department will have the demographic information, we'll contact the parents about second dose, or we could give it to them the next year if they're back in the school, and we can capture them again at second grade, make sure we get that second dose.
The stats show that these kids with that first dose, they're more than likely with the second dose. So, you get them and you give that first dose, they'll come back and get the second dose.
The statistics is 80%, and 80% of the children will start vaccination.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve for the Florida Department of Health Citrus to provide cancer prevention HPV vaccine, to sixth-grade students, along with the state required T-DAP vaccine.
I'm sure. I know it's at the end of our program here, they add a section of questions.
Okay.
Make a motion first.
I'd like the motion, and the second, and then questions.
Well, I will make a motion that we approve the Florida Department of Health Citrus to provide cancer prevention HPV vaccine to sixth-grade students as a pilot project at one middle school in Citrus County as identified by the superintendent.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Powers. Questions?
The motion was, Ms. Powers, I think you got it for a pilot, is that correct? Okay. I would just say, while I'm, I would have reservations, and have as a parent, of making the decision for any other parent, I like that, my first concern was that this entire process required parental approval, and it does require that authorization goes out to the parents for them to approve the vaccine before it's done. I have no problem as a result of that, because it requires parental approval, it's no different than having when I go to my pediatrician, because when I go to my pediatrician, I'm offered the same thing to have, and I believe this is just an extension of that, it is not mandated that a parent take this, like, to be in our school system. So, I would actually, I respect what Mr. Dodd's suggestion is, but I would actually be interested in it being county-wide. Correct.
And the reason I made the motion on the pilot project, I mean, I've got some concerns. I mean, we are dealing with a T-DAP that involves a state-required, state-mandated vaccine for students before they go into the seventh grade, and I understand from the summary that, you know, you want to be, offer a second vaccine that's not required, that has some public concern. I definitely understand the statistics, but I'm a little bit hesitant that, you know, we make our schools the point of delivery for, you know, public health initiatives that, I think it'd be better if we were to poll parents, to talk to parents, I mean, have we done, do we have any surveys, any parent surveys, or, you know, those are things that I would like to see come back to the board, I think, if it's a pilot project in one school, you know, and see what the response is. You know, we don't want to confuse parents, we want parents to make the decisions about their children's health. And I don't want parents to believe that this is a mandate from the school board. I want, you know, we have to follow the law on the T-DAP for seventh graders, but there's not a statutory requirement on this vaccine yet. I've researched it, you know, there are some issues that the company that produces the vaccine is facing, and there are side effects. You know, we really haven't talked about the side effects. I'm not a medical doctor, I'm not a professional, but I have a strong feeling that we allow parents to make decisions for the children. And if it works well at a pilot school, and that there's a benefit, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we work with the Health Department, and, you know, I think this would be a good start, in my view, and that's why I brought it up, I appreciate your comments too, because I know, you know, when you look at the statistics, there is some good reasoning there. But I am not in favor of school-based health clinics, I feel like, not that this would move that way, I've talked to some people in the schools, I've talked to parents, and I've had some concerns when I ask them about this. Now, my understanding is that the T-DAP is offered at the orientation prior to the start of the school year.
It's only offered as a catch for those five kids who did not get the T-DAP at the appropriate time, early in the year. We don't advertise the fact that we take T-DAP to the schools at orientation, we give them that last opportunity to get it done before school starts.
Okay, but in the summary, that's when you want to offer the HPV vaccine?
No.
It says, "Along with the state-required T-DAP vaccine."
We, every spring, and we have the date, September 2nd of February this year, go into each middle school on a separate day and offer the T-DAP. We take the T-DAP, then we give it out there.
So you want to offer the HPV during the school day?
Correct. When we do the T-DAP.
Okay. And, you know, again, I think that's even more reason for me to believe, let's, you know, start it in one pilot project school, see what the response is. There are some side effects that are different from the T-DAP, at least in the research I've done. Now, I don't know if either one of you want to respond to that, but, you know, and then the second and third, and it is interesting, it was three shots up until October this year, where the CDC now says, "Well, if you're 11 or 12, you only need two shots." Actually, it goes up to, what, 14? You only need two shots. So, how, I mean, this vaccine has been in existence for how many years now?
12.
12 years, okay. So in 12 years now, they have now decided that maybe we don't need two, we don't need three, we need two. And I guess that's from research?
Correct.
Correct, that's from research, and right now the recommendation is as long as you get that vaccination series prior to age 14. If you're over age 14, you're recommended.
Mr. Ratchell?
And whichever way the board goes, my recommendation would be also that, as far as the parental consent form is, that we have an opportunity to review it, it needs to be very clear that this is not state, or it's not statutorily mandated, it's completely parental consent, it's not affiliated with the Citrus County School District in any way whatsoever. Parents agree to release us, remitting all liability, and y'all agree to indemnify us, remitting all liability. You vaccinate the wrong kid, and...
Yes, it's our fault.
And it's your fault, and parents are going to, you know, they're going to come, because it's, what you're proposing is happening at our school, and so they're not going to differentiate too much on that. So my suggestion would be to at least have those things in place, to make it very clear to parents that, you know, this is, you know, we're providing the Health Department a space, but it has nothing to do, you know, with a state requirement that...
Actually, you just answered my question, because I was extremely concerned, I read this proposal about the liability of schools, and we do it on the school campuses, and it's not something that's mandated, it's not something that we have to do, certainly that you're asking us to get the children involved in, and I appreciate the comments from Mr. Dodd and Mr. Kennedy, that the parents, I would like to see the need from them, and I've watched all those heart-wrenching ads on TV, and I'm very empathetic to those, and I would like to provide a service if it would prevent one child from getting cancer later. But I am concerned about the liability, because it all sounds good, so the parental form would have to be implemented, and we'd have to be home harmless all the way along the line as a school.
We'd order for your attorney in our state department, for our county health department, to have that form, and that's also why in the proposal we're telling you that school is, these county health department employees would be administering the T-DAP vaccination. And that way, that way makes it very clear who's...
Well, obviously, I'm concerned, but if you say we require T-DAP, so, off along with this, who likes them, it's like the same thing, you have to vote them, it shouldn't be that also, you know, it's very clear.
It would be two separate consent forms, I think, is a way to make sure that it's very, very clear. So it will not be combined on one consent form, it would be two separate consent forms.
Maybe, also, it may not be the same guideline, that same part implies the go-to yet.
Oh, we have a motion on the board for a pilot.
One other thing, Madam Chair, that this board, I think we need to remember, offers a great deal of health services, such as, we provide sealants on our students' teeth. We provide a number of services that are not required by the state, but we do that to ensure that our students and our families have an affordable and access to proper healthcare. And I would caution this board to only limit that availability to one school, I think is short-sighted, that we are saying only one school is worthy of having their children sick. But I think that there is enough evidence to say that the vaccine is working enough, that it's in the marketplace, that parents should make that decision. Well, no, but if we're only making it available to one school, which is what the motion is, my concern is, is that there's a number of students that are going to be disenfranchised.
I agree with you. We recommend it from the district, from the countywide, or district-wide, because after working with Mr. Ratchell, and he'll work with their attorneys to make sure that we are home harmless, we had the same feeling that this opportunity just bugged us, that, you know, it's probably only by parent consent that we'll be on our facility, but we'll be home harmless, and we just felt like, I would tell you, I don't know what school we picked to put that in, and we just felt like it should be district-wide. So, if the board chooses to go pilot, and we will live with that, then the motion that's been recommended would need to be voted down.
Well, I think we can go ahead and vote on the motion that's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And then we'll vote, that fails?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Florida Department of Education, I'm sorry, Florida Department of Health Citrus to provide cancer prevention HPV vaccine to sixth-grade students, along with the state-required DTAP vaccine, but I'm going to add, subject to the approval, the legal approval of council.
What you said, along with at the same time, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know logistically how we can ask the Health Department to go in twice from an economic perspective, am I correct to say that? You're going to be utilizing staff twice to accomplish that?
And interrupting the school that once.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we're providing that information on a, two separate forms, there are two separate incidents, you know, vaccines that are given, that's, at least that's my motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Councils, do you have any further comments, discussion?
Well, I've got, I still have some concerns about, I mean, I thought that if we were to give it a try, to see what response is, I mean, obviously, you know, when you deal with health issues, and you deal with, you know, prescription drugs, and all the things that we've had to deal with, the board has dealt with in the past, you know, I've got a concern that the public that I serve, that I respond to, may feel like there's, you know, this is kind of us forcing our will upon people and upon parents. And I really do wish that, in this process, if this passes, you know, if you look back on this event, you know, it's going to rely a lot on how you operate this program now, or how many calls that we're going to get, and how much confusion that's going to be out there. And so, you know, we're kind of, you know, opening the door for the Health Department to come in and interrupt school, I mean, you mentioned it too, and you're going to have to deal with a second, and, you know, you know, I guess we're not going to go with a third, and you're not going to do a third, and third immunization, so that they won't have to come in a third time. But tell us how, how does that, how are you going to take care of that in six months? Who's going to monitor that? Who's going to...
We have a system that does automatic recall, we call and send letters to parents, and ask them to bring their child to have the second vaccine.
Bring their child to the Health Department?
Correct.
Okay, and if they don't bring their child to the Health Department, what happens then?
Remind, and remind, and remind.
Will you come back to the school and give them a second?
We still have the opportunity, when we come back the next year, in the spring, to do the new sixth graders, that we could reach out to those parents whose child got the first vaccine a year before, and offered it to them on that school at that time.
So that would be the only time, you wouldn't schedule another interruption and come in? And as far as side effects that may take place, they'll, after the vaccination, they would, the school nurses obviously are going to have to be aware of the process here, because I know you said that you all would be the ones that would be administering it. But once you leave, and the child is still at school, if there are side effects, the school nurse is obviously going to be made aware of.
If there are an issue or a side effect from a vaccine, then we call us immediately, and we need to check. Yes, we have, there's a mechanism, it's called DARE, it's Vaccine Adverse Reaction Reporting System. Everything that is identified as an adverse reaction to a vaccine is reported to that system, and there's a protocol that we follow.
And that notice be on that parental permit signs, or the parent notice call you rather than the school?
The only telephone number on those consents is our home. And my problem with the selection of just one school, I've been in Citrus County for 43 years, so I've gone through this east side, west side, in the real estate business and in the school business, and so I think it would be very difficult for us to pick one school, and I think we'd probably get more calls because we would pick La Canto because it's centrally located, so it can, so I just assume we have the opportunity to have all of the schools have the same thing at the same time, so that we can avoid that. We pick one school, and instead of a unified effort for all of our kids.
I just wish we would survey parents.
Yeah, that was, but I think, if they're watching those same ads on TV, I think you're probably right in trying to do it through the school system, and parents can always say no.
Respectfully, I'm sorry.
What I felt in Mr. Dodd's motion is that it was a cautious approach, maybe to make sure the program that's placed in schools works, and I don't think that he chose the most critical, because more...
Yeah, but I think that's what the process is going to do.
A possibility, so we could do this. But I think the shift should be excused, and I've worked many times, I've had a problem with these all the time, I mean, y'all have been on the path, but this subject, it's actually...
We have the process of how this whole process flows, we've done that many, many times, we have that process down pretty much to the science of this campaign, it goes very smoothly. We vaccinate about 100 children in about a 30 minutes at a time.
100, yeah.
Yes. I mean, it's a very smooth process, we try to interrupt school as little as possible.
And just wanting to make sure the kids feel it's smooth, and I commit, Mr. Dodd would want to see him do something that works well for each other, because it's not a solution, and we want all to work in one place.
Excellent. Mr. Kennedy?
Just that, I have, I would echo, I have great respect for the Health Department. You know, I can tell you that my pediatrician, going back a number of years ago, was promoting this, and I certainly, as a parent, wasn't ready to take that plunge, and, you know, it is a tough, tough subject, which is my, my biggest concern is parental permission, that's being addressed. I believe that one of the challenges we have in the community that has 70% of its students economically disadvantaged is that we are having to often do more than we would have to in other communities. That's not unique to this community, we know that. Again, I bring up things like, you know, teeth sealants, and for some reason I'm having trouble thinking of all of them, but obviously vaccines are another piece. We have, we frankly have to offer free examinations for both health and sports related issues because of that. This is, again, with parental permission, I believe we have gotten the issue out.
We do a lot, we have a vision here, it's all those things that we're, that we are involved with, and those are areas that I see as affecting work. I mean, you know, the student can't hear, then the learning's going to be affected, it's see, the learning's going to be affected. It's just that this is one of those areas that, you know, I would prefer to take a slower approach on.
Okay. All in favor of the new vote?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May.
Okay. Passes three to two. Linda Powers is a no.
In case anybody was on this.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we're ready to approve the 2017-2018 school calendar. Who has that thing?
Which one won?
Which one won?
No, it won't be.
Whichever one we want.
The presentation, the projector isn't working, so I have.
All right, hello again. All right, we have the calendar for the 17-18 results for you. In the PowerPoint, the first, the first slide is our timeline, kind of each time I have spoken with you, I show you where we are at on that timeline. As you can see, we are in step 11, where the calendar that has the majority of support, as determined by the vote, will be submitted to the superintendent for recommendation to the school board for approval. And then, as you can see on the next slide, are the results. I have three charts there. The first chart is just letting you know the percent of our staff that actually voted. Of course, everyone is encouraged to vote, it is anonymous, and as you can see there, 58% of our staff, that's instructional, administrative, and support, did vote. That's approximately 1,200 employees. That is slightly higher than last year, just as a side note. And then at the bottom, you see two pie graphs, one showing you on the right, the district staff vote, where 60%, as you can see, voted for our calendar number two, 32% voted for calendar number one, and 7% for calendar number three. And then the other pie chart separated out what our SAC votes were. If you remember, each SAC committee gets one vote. So around 21 of our SACs did have a vote, and as you can see, it kind of parallels with our district staff vote, which is, you know, just kind of nice to know that. So you've got, of course, that parent input there and the parents vote, as well as, of course, district staff members that serve on SAC committees. So 62% of our SACs did vote for calendar number two, and 38% voted for calendar number one. The next slide is a little different than we've done in the past. This slide broke down the main reasons why people voted for certain calendars. At the bottom of each ballot, there were options for employees to say what led them to vote for the calendar that they chose. And we broke down all that data and basically we put it into Survey Monkey, so that we were able to graph it and see what were the major deciding factors between our different calendars. And as you can see, calendar, you know, number one, number two, and number three are across the top. And that Christmas break is the, probably the biggest thing that was mentioned of why they voted for one or the other, whether it be that there were more days before actual Christmas Day versus more days after Christmas Day off. Also, calendar number two having the full two weeks when you include your weekends in there, being time off, that was something mentioned. But then you see some other pieces, for example, calendar number one, 16% of the people that voted for that calendar, their reason was because their FTE weeks did not have any half days in them, and they felt that that was important. Where our other two calendars, they did have that. Where if you look at calendar number two, you see a lot of green, and that is because a lot of people chose number two, 36% chose number two, because of the number of days in each term being more equitable than they were in calendar number one and number three. Calendar number three, there were 25% of people that chose that one because that was the only calendar where the parent conference days for elementary and middle did not fall on the end, last two half days for the first nine weeks. So, you know, we did pick that up from this, just so that we could have that for further discussion for next year when our committee meets. And this is brought to, you know, brought to their attention as well as, okay, well, what were the major deciding factors last year when, when we did calculate our votes? The last few slides is just the breakdown of what calendar number two was, the one that did win the vote, you see it in the different formats. The first one where you actually see the testing calendar at the bottom, and then you have the rationale, and then the major differences between the calendar options, and of course, the very last one, which is what parents normally see, what we publish as the 17-18 school calendar for Citrus County with the, from August to May there, with the legend at the bottom.
And this calendar does have the spring break as same as the fair week.
That is correct.
And that's obviously because of the testing requirements that we're able to.
Well, well, actually, we had to call the state regarding that, because it actually does fall within this testing. However, we are able to test after it, they approved that we are able to do that, because it's still within the window.
I move that we approve the 2017-2018 school calendar for Citrus County, calendar number two.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any further questions or comments?
The only comment I'd like to make is we made headlines in the Chronicle last year because we didn't have the micro school graduation date. So I'd like to see that added, it's, I mean, the calendar's fine, but we've listed all of the high schools, including WTC. Then I think we need to add micro school in there whenever they're going to.
Absolutely.
So we don't make paper changes.
For that, sorry. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. All right.
Thank you, by the way, to Ms. Crowe, who did an amazing job facilitating that calendar committee. I've served on it now for a number of years, and I'm very appreciative. I inherited from you, from you this morning.
Hi, Ms. Suzie.
Good afternoon. I am requesting approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the golden rod.
I'll make a motion that we approve the personal information faculty and staff as instructional support recommendations as presented in the golden rod.
And motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Couts. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Aye, motion carries five zero.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. I'm sure I'm here. She's gone. All right. We need to approve to use cooperative purchasing programs for economic advantage. Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am. Let me just bring this agenda item to you. It's a lot of awareness, but also to request the approval to use the cooperative purchasing programs for economic advantage. Essentially, the way the state, the Florida statute reads now on purchasing is that we should review and use state contracts that are out there, that are certainly at the most cost efficient amount that we can get. We can also use purchasing consortiums, which is what we're showing out here today, all the ones that we use, and there's a couple other ones. The power buying group of food service uses in the Bay Area consortium, and there's many others that are listed here. But these are alternatives that we can use, but ultimately, we always got to fall back on if the state contracts are cheaper, we need to buy off the state contracts. Doesn't preclude us from going out and doing a bid for other services, but at the end of the day, we got to make sure that the state contract is either cheaper, we should be going back to look at the state contract, unless there's a compelling reason to use it, the RFP. Am I correct?
Okay. We have a motion.
Just, you know, we went through a big process couple of months later, we redid all of the big documents, like, put all this language in, in the documents.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have any further questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. So we can, obviously, the district can now go to the state term contracts.
We always have, yes. Now the state law says that we should use them, unless we have a compelling reason for cheaper pricing, we should use the state contracts.
And so when you talked about bidding, that we could still bid something?
Right, like last year, we bid for vehicles, I think, for food service, maybe last year, the year before. And actually, the RFP came back that they were more expensive than the vehicles on the state contract, so we revert back with the state contract and pricing. So if it's in your best interest, in your best economic interest to use it, the price is going to better, and a bid, you can use those. Or if the state contract is cheaper, you should be using those.
So the National Joint Powers Alliance now, Florida is, has that on state contract?
These are consortiums that we can use to check pricing, that other government agencies come together and inform, that you can use their pricing as well.
So these may not even be from the state of Florida?
That's correct.
These are.
U.S. commodities.
We hear, we hear, you know, talk about using local vendors and suppliers, but in reality now, this may not even be state vendors. These are bids, these are contract bids that the state gets, and I'm sure they have a process where, by Mr. Bradshaw, as far as, is that an annual, or are they doing like three year contracts? No, that's, but it is a process. Just like, do we foresee it changing anything major with the way we're doing business?
No, I think it actually.
Cut local vendors out, or is this going to hurt anyone?
No, I think it gives us like more opportunity by looking for pricing at different venues, different, different purchasing sources, and make sure we have the best pricing available for the school district.
Right.
Now, some of the local guys may not be a member of the consortiums or state contract, that's where it may have some issues, but we are compelled to follow the state laws that we should be using. State contracts of the cheapest price for a consortium or we go and bid.
Mr. Walker, you, and I recall at times in the past where you've shown me where we had a local bid that came in, it was higher than the state's. We went with the state, and interestingly, they came back and hired the guys that were locally to do the work. Which we, we were like, if you'd just given us that price to begin, we would have, we could have, you know, but now I think that's happened more than once with.
Yeah, a lot of the construction projects, we see that.
So it, you know, sadly, they may end up on the national list, and it's still the local hire that's where that work's going to take place. But the management of that and the oversight may be done nationally or at the state level.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. You're welcome, thank you, sir. We have a presentation of our education foundation. Shout them for that. Right at five o'clock, I want you to know this, Ed.
I see a lot of our CCEF people in the audience there.
Hello, hello. Good afternoon. Today, I am here with the members of the CCF Board of Directors, a few of them that are not out in the community doing shop with the cops, somewhere in Tallahassee. They're all over the community tonight, but we do have a few members here to share with you what's happening with the Citrus County Education Foundation. In 2006, we gave approximately $8,000 to the Citrus County School District. Today, I am honored to report that due to the dedication of these Board of Directors, we have given roughly $99,000 in district initiatives and just over $120,000 to school programs directly thus far for the 2016-2017 school year. Yeah, super excited about that. More importantly, we have impacted thousands of children through all of these programs. Currently, the foundation is working on 28 active programs, makes me feel a little better for stress, through partnerships throughout the community, such as Raymond James, Duke Energy, Suncoast Credit Union, Ryan Lampa Sonus State Farm, TCG, Gulf to Lake Marina Trailers, and the matching funds of the Consortium of Education Foundations in the state of Florida. This dedicated group of volunteers, they are making an everlasting impact on the future of Citrus County. Some of these most recent partnerships, which do not affect the foundation bottom line of funds, but they are truly priceless. Tim Graf is with us today, the store manager of Lowe's, who has started the first Lowe's program of paying his employees to go to, LaCanto High School is our pilot school, he is paying his employees to actually mentor students there on a weekly basis. And we are very grateful for that as well. Also, the Century Link program, which allows needy families to apply for a low and reduced internet rate at home, is a priceless partnership that we just cannot put money on. Those families, we've gotten some feedback, we're working with Century Link to see how many families in Citrus County are taking advantage of it. I was in a meeting today where we are going to go to some more schools and kind of rediscuss that program and find out if we can get some more families involved. There's still a need there that we need to pursue. Also, partnering with Seven Rivers Regional Hospital through the Kings Bay 5K this year, this has given us the opportunity to bless our teachers with an additional $13,000 in the first annual Health and Wellness Mini Grant Program. Health and Wellness is one of our direct initiatives this year in our strategic planning, and we are so excited about that partnership. All of these initiatives would not be possible without the fundraising efforts of our schools, our teachers, our administrators, everyone comes together through coupon books, through many of our fundraising programs that we have. The Board of Directors, they're happening monthly now, which requires an amazing amount of working time. So today, we are just here to share with you where we are as a foundation, but also to celebrate with each of you the partnership of investing in our future with Citrus County School System. So to the school board, to the Citrus County teachers, and to our superintendent, Mrs. Himmel, on behalf of the foundation, we say thank you. And here is to funding to our future. We would like to present to all of you from the Citrus County Education Foundation for the, for the past, present, and future partnership of investing in our future, our children. Thank you.
You're not going to leave without doing a commercial for tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah, you are so right. So Foundation Best Friday Night. Yes. We have a few celebrities, and I will say, the talk has started on who's going to take away, yes, the smack talk, yes, you're right, on who's going to take away that championship trophy. I did receive a text today about some businesses that are inviting all of their employees to help support their celebrity bartenders. So right now, we have just over 200 items for our silent auction, so we are working on putting those together. But yes, Friday night, Pine Street Pub, 6 to 11, come out and celebrate. It's a night to celebrate, it's the last Friday.
If I have a microphone, Brian doesn't. I'd just like to all of our employees that Jerry Mulligan and I will be.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it. Okay. Before we go into this next item, Johnny has a few words to say.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we talk about the approval of the bid 2016-30, I want to share with you some information, give you a historical view as to how we ended up where we're at here today with this specific bid. This system with IPS, the firearm system IPS is approximately 20 years old. We have experienced multiple maintenance-related issues with that system. We've had some pulsation failures. We have a need for replacing the wiring for that system. We have also had some connectivity issues with that system as well. One of the other concerns that we have with that system is the availability of replacement parts should that system fail. We've been told by the manufacturer that they no longer manufacture the components necessary for that system, and our best opportunity to find replacements parts would be on eBay. That is a concern for us. Also, that system is what they call a non-addressable system, meaning if there was an issue where the firearm was engaged, it would only tell us what zone within the school or on that campus that this, the issue, where the issue is located. Unfortunately, it would not tell us the exact location by the component which was triggered to, which was triggered to cause the firearm to go off. Our schools, we are moving toward an addressable system. Having said all of that, we put the IPS replacement fire, the replacement of the firearm system IPS on our five-year work plan to be done during the 16-17 school year, or through the budget cycle 16-17. We did budget $305,000 for that project. We went through the purchase department to advertise that bid. It was sent out to 77 different companies. We also know that the bid was picked up by multiple builders, what do you want to call it, organizations, if you will, who sent it out to folks in that line of work. Unfortunately, we only had one bidder come in to place a bid. There's a lot of different reasons for that, I think we could all speculate as far as the marketplace, as to why they may not have bidded on this particular project, but to our surprise, the bid did come in at an elevated price. We budgeted $305,000. Our staff, when we look at our five-year work plan, our staff does the best they can do, looking at previous or most recent projects to come up with a projected cost for any given project. In this situation, $305,000 was market standard at that time. We look at Homosas Elementary School, we replaced that, that system last year, that came out at about $2.95 a square foot for that project. Certainly, Homosas Elementary School is a much different set of circumstances than Emory Primary School. Homosas Elementary School was relatively recently renovated, and there were some new buildings there, so it didn't call for pulling wires through the newly constructed areas. We just had to upgrade and enhance the system in that portion of the school. Having said that, Emory Primary School has not experienced a renovation, and so that would be a new system from top to, top to bottom. Having said that, the bid did come in considerably higher. If you look at the cost per square foot for the job at Homosas Elementary School, $2.95 a square foot, this project came in at $5.67 a square foot.
What was the total amount, you know?
$460,000.
Goodness gracious, safe to live.
Okay.
Okay.
So, before we come to the board today and ask you to approve that bid, we want to share with you your options as a board collectively. We, as a staff, don't have the authority to reject a bid, to accept a bid, or to go out and negotiate a bid. We do know that Florida Administrative Code does afford the board the authority to give staff direction to do a couple of different things. First, notify the bidder that we reject that bid, we may place it out, we may rebid it, we can do that. The board also has the authority to accept the bid, and that tells the staff we're moving forward that project. Or thirdly, the board does have the option of directing staff to negotiate with this bidder. Florida Administrative Code says, if there's less than two bidders for any project, the board, if it's the board's will, the board can go, uh, to direct staff to go to that bidder and negotiate that price. If that's something you would like for us to do, we will gladly do that. The way I see that process working is if the board, if that is the will of the board, myself and staff will engage the contractor who bid on this project, we will come to a negotiated price, we'll bring that price back before the board, and if the board is more comfortable with that price, you can accept it, reject it, we can rebid it. I will share with you this, as we go through this process, if we do experience a failure of that system at Emory Primary School, and if we cannot, if we cannot repair that failure within a four-hour window of time, we are compelled to provide a fire watch, a designated fire watch at that school. What does that mean? We have to have a staff member designated to log that facility, making sure they're logging where they're at at each given time, there's like points in which the fire marshal will say, you need to be here, 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 within certain intervals of time. That would be, that's our option at this point, okay? So, I'm really here today, I know that the agenda says we're requesting approval of that bid, but the reality is, I don't think we really come to you guys and ask you to reject things. I think the purpose of my conversation today is to give you the options you have before you, and seeking direction from the board as to what you guys would like for us to do.
I see you need to renegotiate. What do you say?
I agree too. Why, and did we find out, you know, when 77 bids go out and only one comes back, was there a problem with what we were asking them to do? It seems, you know, people are supposed to be wanting to work today.
Yes, ma'am, I do agree. However, in order to bid on our project, they have to be pre-qualified. Of those 77, 10 were pre-qualified, okay? That doesn't mean the other 67 couldn't have bid on it. They could have worked with a general contractor to put to bid on this project. Unfortunately, that's more costly, and I can tell you, in speaking with our folks over maintenance and in the facilities department, to be quite honest with you, the companies that are in this line of work, they don't have enough workers to keep up with the demand of the jobs. We currently have a sys, uh, we have a project going on at WTC, the upgrade of and replacement of the intercom system. The same company that bid on the IPS job is doing that job for us right now. They're having to take workers off that job every so often to put them on another job because they're trying to balance multiple jobs at one time. So, they're, at this point in time, I think the works outpays in the return of workers. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
And so, I think this is where we're going to have to pay a higher premium, to the degree of what we see here before, so they have $460,000.
Excuse me, Mr. Bishop, we're at, at 5:15, and I need for you to just, just to think about what he said, you hold on a minute, and Victoria Smith coming to address our board. And if anybody else wants to address the board. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, Ms. Bryant, and Ms. Himmel, and Mr. Mullin, and Mr. Board members, and Mr. Bradshaw. Victoria Smith, Citrus County Education Association President. I just wanted to bring up a concern, or perhaps an idea. I know right now we're in a teacher shortage, and also maintaining teachers here in Citrus County, and I was just curious why we don't allow temporary certificates for more than one year. I know that we have had, not a lot, but we've had, had some people come in that were trying for their certificate, and then they were not hired, even though they were already in the school system, and they were not hired, so instead, they went to other counties, and they're still working on their certificate, but they are teaching, they're in the classroom, and they're getting that help. I also know Citrus County really does work with, you know, trying to give reminders out, this is happening, also education, they have lots of classes to help, but sometimes it takes more than just one year, especially the math portion. Some people just, you know, they just don't like math like I do, you know, so they just-
No, we don't.
So, they just don't get it right away. But I know the state allows up to three years to work out of field, but we, as a district, well, I shouldn't say be, as a district, we only allow one year, and so I'm just, I was hoping maybe that could change, that could be something to discuss, and just bringing that out there, or maybe to think about, you know, that teaching shortage.
Are these temporary certificates, the alternative certifications, these are not kids that are coming out with, with a degree in education?
No, no, a lot of times it's support, you know, or coming from the business world, or not business world, but coming from a different field, and so they wanted to get an education.
So, it is the alternative certification?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I am all about keeping teachers in the classroom, so something I would like to entertain and discuss. Ms. White?
Ms. White.
Okay. Good after, good evening again. We are required by the certification department, within the first year of being hired, teachers must take and pass the general knowledge test. That is a state requirement. What other districts are doing, I don't know how they are to do, are allowed to do that, but if we were to get audited on that, that would cost the district money. So, within the first year, they have to take and pass the general knowledge test. We, as the HR department, send out reminder after reminder, we start from the very beginning at new teacher orientation, and explain this very clearly. Lindy Boythaler in the professional development department, as they meet during the tip meetings, the teacher induction meetings, she explains that again. We send out email after email and document. We have also set up so that teachers, our new teachers do not have to go to Ocala if they, if they choose not to, to take the free study guide. We provide $4,000 as a district to pay for those classes, so we set up classes in Citrus this year. So, we just had a class out last Saturday, we had over 20 teachers that were registered to take that free study class for the general knowledge test. We also offer other classes, the professional ed study guide, subject area study classes as well, so we offer this. We consistently remind teachers, but that is something we have to follow within, and we share this in great detail with our teachers. Within three years, they have to have a, hold a professional certificate. We put in another step as a district, we put another step in place this year where we required every single teacher on a temporary certificate to meet with us in the evening. We offered three classes, three different times, so that everyone can meet with us. So, and we, again, explained, besides new teacher orientation, we can explain to them, and we gave them time to develop, because we know when they have to do additional coursework, those classes are $550. So, we said, develop a plan, plan for, you know, when you get those checks in the summer, plan for when you receive A-plus dollars, plan for when you receive those retro checks to take some of those $200 tests, to, to take some of those $550 classes, but they have to hold a professional certificate. If they are not certified, they cannot teach in our district. That is certification department, the DOE certification department, that is not our choice. We have, we, as a district, decided that they must have either the general knowledge test within the first year, if they were hired before January 1st, or must hold a professional certificate by April. What we were finding is that teachers did not pass that general knowledge test, or did not hold a professional certificate. We were sitting in our offices, you know, in, in June, and teachers said, well, I didn't realize I had to take another class, even though we had shared, explained, sent out emails, that causes us not to post some of those positions until July, possibly August, which is a huge concern. So, we post those positions, we let those teachers know that they can certainly, if they don't pass the general knowledge test or take the requirements for a professional certificate, that they can certainly reapply, but we leave that to the discretion of the principals. If they want to go ahead and repost, which many of them do, they can do that. A lot of our principals will continue to employ teachers as a long-term sub until they meet those requirements, and then as soon as they meet those requirements, within the next day, they are hired into that position because they're currently long-term subs, have completed the background trainings, but we do everything we can. I, I believe as a district, we go, it's the superintendent's philosophy, we go above and beyond for our new teachers and for all of our staff, and we do that as a district. We continue every year to put things in place, to put procedures, practices, meetings, whatever we can do. I know we've met with staff that even weren't able to attend a mandatory meeting because they held practices and do those extra things. We have met with them individually. If a teacher needed to meet with us at 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, we would do that. On a Sunday, we would do that, so they understand what they need to do to get that professional certificate, because we want to keep them, we have shared that with them, that we will do anything and everything to retain our teachers, so. Is that general knowledge test similar to the class test? Yes. Yes. And the cost of it today is what? $200. So, every time they have to retake a piece, it, it incurs additional costs, and we put everything into place, study guides. We even ordered it as a district so that teachers would not have to order study guides and pay that $30 or $40 fee. We have used our grant money, our Title II money, to purchase study guides. We had a request of 15 more study guides, we ordered 15 more study guides so that every teacher, when they needed a study guide for the general knowledge, professional ed, a specific subject area exam, we ordered those, so we would have those available to our teachers to check out, we send them through mail, whatever, we would drive them to school if we needed to. Between the two sides, have we figured out why? Are they just not taking the test? Are they faring the test? Is money an issue, or is time an issue? They are struggling with, with passing certain sections of the test, is what, and we encourage them from day one, we encourage them, take the general knowledge before December 30th, because if they don't pass either a portion or all of the test, they have to wait 30 days to retake it. So, that can cause an issue, that's why we say, go ahead and take it, borrow one of our study guides, check it out as long as you need, attend one of our classes, the CF, assist us with, we provide the funding for it, and it's a free class, that, and a lot of our teachers do well if they take that class or use the study guide.
And I know, Ms. Himmel's going to probably respond, and the thing I was going to say is, is, and I appreciate it so much, I know you and Ms. Lindy, they all go above and beyond trying to accomplish, you all come out of education in the classroom. It, it sounds like there may be an issue where what they're doing is they're moving into a long-term sub position, and the perception may be that they're just continuing to get hired, they're probably moving into, in some cases, a long-term sub, which I'm assuming is a reduced rate of pay-
Correct.
-when that happens. Just in case that we're missing something, and, you know, if, if the board is interested, maybe what it is, is to ask the superintendent to see if staff can just talk to some of the surrounding counties and make sure that, that that is what we're understanding, or that, that there isn't something that somehow we've missed, although I tend to think that I have great confidence.
I would recommend, if you want us to check with DOE, we check with DOE, but just because other counties do it.
Mr. Mullin, you're correct, and I apologize.
The modern ones don't even survive.
They really don't give, well, Marion County did. Mr. Mullin, you're correct, and, and thank you for pointing that out. But maybe, maybe just to, to verify that, if we learn something different, come back to the board, make sure we can share.
Like being pulled over by the sheriff and saying, you see that red truck that just goes by here? It's not going to hurt, cut it.
No.
Sorry. Who's saying?
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Johnny, I think, okay.
And this is from everything that people have talked, you know, I know Mr. Mullin tomorrow and Mr. Bishop are meeting with Mike Price tomorrow about a teacher shortage, and I think Mike's looking more statewide than just Citrus County, and I think Vicki's being interviewed also, but I am guessing that every board member knows, this is not a Citrus County issue, this is a statewide issue, and it's a national issue, and I spoke to Sutter County Superintendent the other day, and he said that he's never been in a bind before for elementary teachers, they can't even find elementary teachers to fill their positions. So, we know that students are not going into education, we know that they're making choices to go into other fields, and I know that every school district in the state of Florida, not based on their pay, based on there are no teachers out there for them to hire, so I'm guessing you all know that, but we've heard that over and over, there's a teacher shortage in Citrus County, it's not just Citrus County, it's statewide, nationwide.
And we all just went to a conference down in Tampa, and I asked a couple of the other school board members, and, and we are certainly not alone, not alone.
And a bus driver shortage.
And a bus driver shortage.
And, Miss Mullin, I mean, I remember going into classrooms, and we're just talking two years ago, it was, it was commonplace to always see interns throughout our district and throughout our schools. I mean, they're a rarity, and, and when asked, I mean, principals would love to have interns right now, we don't have schools that are putting out interns.
No, they're not, and that's why I asked the question about the alternative certification, because that, we have brought teachers into our classroom with that, and then maybe they really need to-
We know that they're making choices to go into other fields. And I know that every school district in the state of Florida is not based on their pay, based on there are no teachers out there for them to hire. So I'm guessing you all know that, but we've heard that over and over. There's a teacher shortage in Citrus County. It's not just Citrus County, it's statewide, nationwide.
And we all just went to a conference down in Tampa, and I asked a couple of the other school board members, and we are certainly not alone. Not alone.
And a bus driver shortage.
And a bus driver shortage.
And Ms. Mullin, I mean, I remember going into classrooms, and we're just talking two years ago, it was commonplace to always see interns throughout our district and throughout our schools. I mean, they're a rarity. And when asked, I mean, principals would love to have interns right now. We don't have schools that are putting out interns.
No, they're not. And that's why I asked the question about the alternative certification, because that, we have brought teachers into our classroom with that, and then maybe they really need to understand that, you know, they need to move beyond that mentoring and make sure that all these tests are done. And I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Swain is right on top of them.
I'm sure she is. All right. Johnny, I think Mr. Dodd has something to say.
So I appreciate you bringing this to the board.
Thank you.
I mean, we had some discussions in relation, in regards to it. You know, I was really concerned about the only one bid received. And, you know, I remember when we set the budget at $305,000. I mean, I was, thought that was a lot at the time. So when this came in at $460,000, you know, with one bidder, I mean, it really got me fired up a little bit on, you know, what's the best thing for this school district? Of course, we never want to put kids at risk. And, you know, we all are in agreement with that. We've got to make sure we have a vital firearm system. But I just, you know, I'm not even that much up for renegotiating with them. My question and all, I know, I asked you once and you kind of explained it, but if we were to rebid this, is there more that we could do when we send the bid out? Is there more contact that we can make?
To attract.
Yeah, to attract. And, you know, that's kind of what I was interested in.
We did reach out to those companies that historically bid on those types of projects for our school district. I know staff reached out to those companies, and unfortunately, they failed to submit a bid. And I can only assume this because, well, what we've been told is there's more work out there than in staff. Certainly, we can change the specs on that system, but I do believe that that will parlay into bigger issues down the road. We brought before the board a few months back, when we asked for permission to bid that project, to sole source this, our firearm systems, we do on sole source because of the consistency in maintenance and the consistency of the repairs of those systems. What is not included in this bid is the extended warranty. We wanted to extend that warranty out for four years. We'd have to pay over $41,000 upon that. So I shared that with you because, yeah, we can change the specs on this system, we can change, we can do away with the sole source component of that bid, that'll probably bring in more bids, but you're not going to get the same caliber quality of system that we have in other schools.
What about who just did the home assassin one?
That was a sole source project.
All right, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So the issue will be, we have one technician, one gentleman, who is responsible for our firearm systems that work within the district, and that's not his full-time job. That's a small piece of his larger job. So I believe that if we do away with the sole source, we may subject ourselves to incur a large amount of maintenance fees and repair fees over the next 20 years because these systems should last around 20 years.
So what's our direction to Mr. Bishop?
Can I just add one more thing, if you don't mind? I want to make the most informed decision possible. If we, if the decision is to reject the bid, I want to share with you the potential consequence of that. If the issue is to renegotiate the bid, I want to share with you the consequence of that. If you reject the bid, there is no guarantee that any other company will bid on it. There's also no guarantee that the bid that we get through the rebidding of it is going to be lower than what we have here today. Okay? I just want you to understand that that could very well happen. We'd be hopeful it didn't happen.
Yes, we would.
If we, if the direction is, the directive of the board is to renegotiate, there's no guarantee that this specific contractor is willing to renegotiate. The bid is valid for 30 days. The contractor does have the ability to extend that sunset period of that bid if they so choose. That bid, if I'm not mistaken, it sunsets the 15th or 16th, if I'm not mistaken. We're very close to the end of that 30 days. So if it is the will of the board for us to renegotiate those conversations, we would want to start those very, very quickly. The other option of the board is this, take no action on it. Give us an opportunity to reach out to the contractor over the next couple of days to try to negotiate a lower price. And then if it sunsets and they do not want to extend that availability period of that bid, then it sunsets. If they want to negotiate and extend it, then we can bring it to you at a future board meeting, hopefully the January board meeting.
Say that, say that last part again, as opposed to us giving you authorization to just go out and...
Just table it.
Table it, table it with the direction, the going to try to renegotiate for the January.
I make a motion that we table this.
To the January.
I make a motion we table this.
And before you leave, Johnny, can I ask one more question? We've got pretty talented staff in Citrus County. I mean, some people that work in our schools, we saw, I saw him as a teacher. John took a real good care of my diving board over there. But if the other people didn't bid because of staff, do we have staff that's available to help get another bid? And, you know, we've got workers that are probably pretty talented. I mean, pulling wires is, I mean, I watched them do it. I could probably do what they did in Equus River High School, pulling wires through there.
When contractors bid on that project...
Do we offer?
To supplement the work.
Some staff work?
No, ma'am, that's not customary, what we do. Yeah, and we have, once again, we have, we have one guy that's, that has a training in that area. Certainly, we have plumbers and we have carpenters and what have you, but I don't know if they're qualified to do what this job entails. A lot of programming, a lot of computer software programs, projects.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy made a motion to table. Did we have a second? Second. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Bradshaw. So, you know, it sounds like what Mr. Bishop is saying is that since we only had one bidder, we can go back now and negotiate with that bid.
If you had two bidders, you could have done that. One bidder, you can't.
So with one bidder, we could go back and negotiate a deal. And who would be involved with negotiating? Is that something that your staff would do or...
And we also have an architect on the job.
We have an engineer that we employ for this job. And I can tell you, the staff that we have, in Mr. Stokes and Mr. Burkall, are second to none. I would, I would put their negotiation skills up against anyone's. I feel very confident that they can negotiate within the best interest of the school.
Well, I'd like to get the negotiation down to $305,000 that we budgeted.
Your mountains, don't you?
Well, I understand. But I, but I understand. When we go back to that, we've got to understand that availability of workers is not there. When I built my house, it cost X. A few later years after I built my house, Larry wanted to build a house. That same exact house and the same exact contractor was just under twice the price. So he didn't build that house because of availability of work. He really didn't need to build Larry's house.
And so, if we approve the tabling of this, and we're going to bring it back in the January meeting, and we will again discuss, and you'll bring back more information from this bidder. So are we actually approving them to renegotiate, Mr. Bradshaw?
Well, you would table it and ask them to negotiate, but not to negotiate with the sole. But you're not approving the bid.
We're not approving the bid, but we are going to give the district the ability to go back and negotiate. And there's no conflict issues here, there's no...
Statute, statute and...
There's, I mean, there's no...
Because there's only one bidder.
Right.
If there were two, if they were...
We're not changing the scope.
We can't change the scope or the specs of the project.
But so, but in reality, if we change the specs of the project, we would have to rebid it. But if we change the specs, there is potential for other bidders to bid it, is what we said.
That's, well...
Well, that's a guess.
That's a guess. There's potential for them to bid. We can go out to rebid with the same specs, and now companies may want to get in the game. I don't know. That's a risk we take.
What can you do about the, the full access to the house? Are you saying, maybe the house you're talking about?
That's a great question. Our point of reference is our most recent project, which was home assassin, as I shared, it came in at $2.95 a square foot. This project came in at $5.67 a square foot.
That would be higher.
That is considerably higher. That's considerably higher. All the job, but I do want to caution the board, the job at Emmerich Primary School is not the same type of job because of the buildings.
I see you all working with things, I see negotiating, but I've never seen you guys negotiate to get something bad for us, you know? I put faith in what you're doing. And the figure here, although I don't care that much for it, I still feel that that might be a good faith bid, a good faith offer. That's what I was asking you, is if you go back to the person, they say, well, you know, you did that for $40,000, I would feel $580,000 now. That could very well happen.
Yes, ma'am, and that's a fair point, but I do also want to point out that Mr. Burkall and Mr. Stokes did consult with the engineer that we hired for this project, and he did indicate that this number was a little surprising to him as well.
And so, if they came back at 500, then you won't reject the bid.
Yeah, we would reject it.
Then felt that maybe you could get a lower...
The engineer himself?
Engineer.
No, ma'am, we didn't ask him whether or not he feels that we could get it any lower. We asked him if the, if the market at this time, if that's a fair price for the market at this time, and his response was, it came in, it would be a surprise to him as well.
So you're saying that we could table it, you feel good about tabling it, and then coming back in January and redo it?
I feel very good about that. So as long as the board understands that if that system breaks and we can't get, we can't get the parts to repair within four hours, then you guys know we're going to have to hire a fire watch. And also, if the board makes the decision for us to renegotiate, I feel good about it as long as you recognize that I can't guarantee it's going to come at any lower than what you see before you do that.
And I appreciate...
Or that he will extend the offer.
That is correct.
And I totally appreciate, and I, Mr. Bishop, as always, you're making sure that we have full disclosure and transparency. I think if we had to go to a fire watch, I think I still would rather look at funding that on a short-term basis, as expensive as that would be, to try and save literally, hopefully, hundreds of thousands of dollars by relooking at the whole situation. Let's hope that's not even something, but I think that's a reasonably weighted, you know, risk to take, knowing that we could face that, and yes, knowing that, you know, we still have some issues out on this, but I think we owe it to the taxpayers and to our kids who could ultimately, this could be affecting our budget line significantly. We need to try and have a conversation before we just spend this extra money.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes. Has there been discussion, and I know that, you know, we have an individual who works on our firearms and not his only job, I understand that, but like, I spoke to some members of the fire department, you know, and just asked them, you know, what their knowledge level is on those things. Do we reach out to them at all? Like, I mean, like the fire inspector or city members, as they're in the fire service now? Is there any contact with those individuals? They offer us any kind of advantage to look at the specs of a system? Or do we, have any contact with them?
Contact with them. We have the scope of designing or replacing a firearm system. I want to try to understand the question.
Right, with the scope of firearms.
Just with the scope of firearms. I'd have to defer that to Mr. Burkall, since the, do we reach out to them when we talk about the firearm system?
We used to use their services for plan review, and they was not charging us.
Want to come up and speak?
The only thing, we used to use the county's services for plan review, then when they started charging us for those services, we took that service in-house as well. So we do our own plan review, our own fire inspections. That falls under risk management on that end of it, so.
Our staff have the same certifications that their staff has, and the same training.
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, we have a motion to table, we have a motion. Yes. And a second. All in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry we went nine minutes over. I'm going to recess our meeting and open the public hearing.
It's good afternoon, board members and welcome, Ms. Couts. I'll try to be brief. I know I normally don't have this many policies on one agenda for this meeting.
That's okay.
And some of these things are time sensitive. The first one, these are all public hearings, first one is policy 2.80, reporting child abuse. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any comments on policy 2.80, reporting child abuse?
I'm going to make a motion.
No, I've got to ask it three times.
Oh, I'm going to get public, sorry.
No problem. Any comments on reporting child abuse?
She's on it one day.
That's it all.
Go ahead.
That's three. All right, you're up.
Okay. I just wanted to make a motion to ask policy 2.80, reporting child abuse.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is request to approve the revision of policy 5.20, student assignment.
Do we have any comments from the audience for policy 5.20, student assignment? Any comments? Hearing none. We have a motion.
I need to approve policy 5.20, student assignment. I've already seen so many times I feel like you're up there.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries five zero.
The next item is a new policy. It's policy 5.23 for controlled open enrollment.
Do we have any comments from the audience about policy 5.23, controlled open enrollment? Anybody from the audience? Hearing none? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve revision of policy 5.23, controlled open enrollment.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Couts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries five zero.
The next one is number four, a new policy 5.25 for classroom transfer.
Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on policy 5.25, classroom transfer? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none? Do we have a motion?
Move approval on policy 2.25, I'm sorry, thank you, 5.25, classroom transfer.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the new policy 5.25. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries five zero.
The next item is revision to policy 5.321, bullying and harassment misses concerning students and our staff. We have two different policies.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to talk to us about 5.321, bullying and harassment? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I need to approve policy 5.321, bullying and harassment.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries five zero.
Number six, 5.55, notification of involuntary examination. This is also a new policy.
Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to speak to policy 5.55, notification of involuntary examination? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve new policy 5.55, notification of involuntary examination.
Okay.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Couts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, it is enthusiastic. Passes five zero. She's worried about my enthusiasm. Okay.
The next one is a revision to policy 6.33, alcohol and drug-free workforce. Workplace.
Yes. Okay, do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to policy 6.33? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move that we accept policy 6.33, alcohol and drug-free workplace.
Move that we accept policy 6.33, alcohol and drug-free workplace?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Council, a second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor? Aye. Can I ask, before we go, can I ask a question? Sure. I'm concerned that sometimes when we have our drug-free workplace, that I still wanna see if we can get some language and treatment, and it doesn't have to be with this amendment, but I am concerned that sometimes we are really quick to act when we could treat and maybe save somebody, so. You're right. I'd like to consider that, maybe not at this time, but I'd like to, at a future time, I'd like to offer treatment for people that are south. Okay. You sure got a big cough from this power, right?
I know, we're working on that.
We are. All in favor? Aye. Has this five zero?
And the final policy revision for this evening is the revision to policy 9.30, community use of facilities.
Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to speak to the revision of policy 9.30, community use of facilities? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move approval on revisions of policy 9.30, community use of facilities.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Has this five zero? I'm closing the public hearing. You're welcome, sir. Thank you. All right. Now, back to where we were. I'm gonna reopen the regular meeting, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw, I need to do that.
Mr. Dixon, could you just stand by, one of my comments, I may want to reference something.
Okay.
Your attention.
Move approval of minutes?
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Turning legal matters.
The legal matters, welcome, Ms. Council, to your first meeting, and this is our last meeting of December, wish you a Merry Christmas and safe holidays.
Same to you. Same to you. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Board member committed reports, Mr. Mullin. Ms. Powers?
Well, I was just getting back from the school association state meeting down in Tampa, or the model.
Except for one.
Except for me, I said it.
I'm sorry.
I got my certificate today.
He's always really in spirit, you know?
Yeah, I know, yes.
I'm truly glad, because there was one session that talked about you didn't need iPads and that sort of stuff, and I'm like, heavens, Thomas, it's weird.
Take her app, the technology.
But many things that actually were honestly genuinely discussed out there, it's good to see that they were discussing, and some of the staff are a little bit upset with this made of this group that they were taking to discuss, and would not be a group that we would take to implement some of this, but we discuss this, you get everything out of the table, then you know what to do, so.
That's right.
We all learn quite a bit, and that, and I'm still in contact with them via phone, because I didn't get to say something I wanted to say, and they're still saying it again.
Very good, very good. Ms. Council, out of this time, all righty. Mr. Kennedy?
I had a high school directions committee meeting today, it was an extremely positive meeting. We had all of our high school principals there, we had WTC represented, our guidance counselors, technology, informational services. Mr. Mullin, I appreciate you were very actively there, our district toses, and it was facilitated by Mr. Rowland, who's left now, he did just a superb job, who was our secondary director. It was interesting, I mean, there was a great deal that we went over today, some of these things, there will be some things I think that'll be brought to us in the near future. One of the big things, obviously, school choice, which is, we voted on tonight, and we know that there's gonna be a lot of movement on that also this legislative session, also some curriculum things for us to look at. But one of the big things was the Academy of Environmental Science conversation, and what I found extremely appreciative was that the guidance counselors were very adamantly supportive of our vote previously, with the vote coming forward, they certainly recognized that they're having challenges. That said, I don't know that this board is fully aware that the contract with the Academy of Environmental Science charter school expires in June of 2017, or the end of the school year. I would ask this board that I think we need to direct, or I would implore that our board that I think we need to direct our attorney, as well as our superintendent, to both begin reviewing that contract, and begin a process for that conversation, because there are a number of things, I have reviewed that contract, there are a number of things that are, we have brought up in this last meeting regarding this issue, regarding the intent of the school, regarding attendance of the school, regarding subjects that would be offered in which schools, and all of those conversations today in the high school directions, it's very clear that there are some concerns of how we work to provide the necessary instruction to our students, and support that, but at the same time, want to support a program that is providing some excellent opportunities in sciences with hands-on learning out at the Academy of Environmental Science. So, if not today, I think we need to, you know, to have a conversation about directing the superintendent and the attorney to do that.
We have taken a copy that, I met with Betty Vanson and Sam Hurst a month ago, they had a few minor changes in the contract that they wanted to look at, I took that copy to David Rowland and that services in the process right now, looking at it, and then he'll bring it to us, and then we'll carry it through.
And again.
And to Mr. Bradshaw.
And we need to realize this, it does one of two things, it either automatically continues if both parties agree, from what I could see, otherwise it's terminated at the end of this year. Do we know if it, for some reason, we, both parties could not agree, and it terminates, would that school have to make reapplication? And I think we're gonna need to, you know, should we not have, we have some differences, that may be something we're gonna have to look at. I hope we don't come to that, but I certainly think we need to be looking at that. Want to thank Commissioner Coleman, who has spent the entire meeting in the audience, and I'm most appreciative, it's been a long time since we've had a commissioner that has done that. It's not his first meeting, it's only his first meeting as a commissioner, because he often would take care of us here, and so I know you understand that, but I also want to thank you for the words that you said in a recent meeting, the many questions that you have asked, and that you're continuing to ask, and specific to the impact fees. One of the issues that we're gonna be facing, as we know, is there's gonna continue to be some impact fee conversation, and there is a great deal of misunderstandings as to capacity at our schools. Now, misunderstanding is not at this board's level, it's not at our staff level, because we have Mr. Dixon, who has been dealing with capacity and impact fees for a few years. I was looking at something the other day, and I believe it was almost 20 years ago that he was having the exact same conversation with, unfortunately, different players, but was having to recommend and say almost the exact same things. Capacity is a big issue that we know we're facing, because capacity, for us, no longer is capacity in our district, or capacity at one school, it's capacity at a grade level. And Mr. Dixon has been excellent, that his staff has been preparing for us our weekly capacity reports. They're a little concerning, you know, out of the 11 elementary schools, only three are less than 90%. The rest of them are typically in the mid-90s, but specifically in the Central Ridge area, which I know has us very concerned. Of the two that are not in the 90s, one of those is IPS, and it's nearing 90%, and really a lot of that has to do with, we know, we've got some renovations that need to be done there, so I think that staff and the administration have been cognizant of trying to not take too many out of zones there if they need it, and preparing for some of the challenges that we have there. The high schools, two out of the three are over 90% capacity. Middle schools are a little better shape, but we don't get kids in these perfect numbers, as we all know, and so, capacity is something that I think that more than this board needs to understand, I believe the public needs to understand it. And so my suggestion is that I think we need to, as a board, begin putting into our regular board meetings record what the capacity reports are for them, because the community needs to understand something. We went through that half penny sales tax, and we still have a disconnect between our needs and the funding that we have.
Yes, we do.
And the capacity for us, I know the question was asked at the Board of County Commission meeting of Mr. Dixon, you know, what's your capacity for the district? And I believe the answer is about 87%. Well, that's if you average everything, but we have the majority of our schools, more than three-quarters of our schools are over 90% capacity, and we're getting ready to have to enter into an open enrollment, and every new building that's built will have an impact on our capacity, and particularly in the Central Ridge area. So my suggestion to this board is, I think we need to seriously look at putting that into a regular part of our meeting, whether it's just note, you know, we make a note and it's put in there, I think we need to make sure that that's regularly flipped at. With that, I just want to thank for today's meeting, I thought it was a very productive meeting, and Madam Chair, as always, you have always kept me as a chairperson, you know, on the straight and narrow, and I appreciate it, and it's good to see you there, so thank you. That's it.
Mr. Dodd?
I went to the student code of conduct meeting out of the canto, we had a good, you know, good meeting, a lot of schools represented there, so Mrs. Hemel, a lot of your assistant principals, principal staff members were there, and we had a good showing of students as well, Regina Alibretta led the meeting, Mr. Bradshaw was there to discuss our code of conduct, which can be, can be a huge discussion at times, but it was a good discussion, and so, you know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we did have some students there, I think that's important for them to be a part of that. We did talk a little bit about the dress code, you know, that was part of one of the students, as we like to get on that topic, and appreciate those concerns. We also talked a little bit about, or I updated a little bit about the medical marijuana issues, that our legislators are gonna have to write the laws dealing with medical marijuana, and how that may affect schools, students, and what's happened in Colorado, as we had a speaker, the attorney from the Colorado Attorney General's Office was in here, they have a very enlightening discussion on marijuana use, and how it's medically used by students in the state of Colorado, and what the school districts had to go to as far as having policies in place, and having areas that's worth discussed, and that very well could end up in student code of conduct. We obviously don't know what's gonna happen yet, because I just read that the Senate is getting ready to have meetings on it, and I guess they've gotta iron out the specifics of the law, so we'll see how that takes place, but that is something that we need to stay attuned to. Also, I've been making the rounds on the Tropicana speech contests, as I'm sure you all have too, judging Tropicana speeches. It's interesting to hear our students' speeches, and how much effort and time they put into those, but that's always kind of a fun little thing. Value Adjustment Board on the vice chair, Value Adjustment Board.
Congratulations.
I had the honor of recognizing our chair, Mr. Brian Coleman, who first meeting was elected as the chair of the Value Adjustment Board by statute.
Very good.
The chair has to be a county commissioner.
You almost got it.
Yeah. And so, Mr. Coleman and Mr. Smith, JBT Smith, serve on that board, on the Value Adjustment Board. I am the main representative from the school board, and Ms. Powers, just to remind you, you are the alternate from the school board. So if I can't make it, I guess I'll.
Don't be there.
But I too appreciate Mr. Coleman's attendance here at this meeting today.
Yes, I do, too.
So that's a great thing. I did, I'll kinda go along with what Mr. Kennedy mentioned about capital funding needs, and the fact, you know, here we had a discussion on a firearm, and who would have ever thought we were talking $460,000 for firearms?
Crazy.
You know, capital expense that we have to deal with, and that, you know, we're gonna try to get that down, obviously, but we're still talking about $100,000 for firearms system. And, you know, I think it's important that our public understands, these are real issues, these are real costs that we have to deal with, and there's needs that we have coming down the road in capital issues. I think we're gonna have a health insurance report at the next meeting, Mrs. Hemel, is that?
Well, I wanted to talk to you about that.
Okay, you'll wait, okay, okay. And then, when I asked Mr. Dixon to hang around for a minute, I was disappointed when I read the NPO report on the Highway 41, widening of Highway 41 there from Middle School Road and on to the north on 41, and I know, Mr. Dixon, you're a part of that process, but, you know, when I came on the board two years ago, they were looking at a four-to-five, six-year project, 2020, and now, according to the latest information, they're now projecting like 10 years, seven to 10 years out. And so I didn't know if there was any information, or maybe if that's something we could have at the next meeting, we could have a little update on that?
Well, what I'm doing, I'm putting together the end-of-year report, and that is one of the things that's in there. It's not that project per se, but it's the inference middle school issue.
Okay.
Traffic light and so forth, which, they seem to always keep delaying that project, I mean, for.
Forever.
Forever. So it's not, I think what they've done is they've reallocated their priorities to US-19 and to a couple other projects in the county that are gonna be underway. We've got US-19 getting ready to start in January, six-lane through Homosassa, we've got 191, which is a county project that's gonna be starting in January, I think they've already acquired all the property for that, and that's gonna be four-lane.
And that starts in January?
I think it is.
I think it happens in March.
Is it?
I think basically by January.
Okay, after the first of the year, at some point next year it'll begin, so, Homosassa Bridge replacement, which is a.
Halls River.
The Halls River Bridge replacement, and there's one other one, but there's a lot of projects out there, DOT projects, so I think what they've done is they've just reallocated their priorities.
Well, they've, the 10.5 million for right-of-way acquisition is still there, I mean, they're in the process of.
Right, they're running right-of-way.
Right.
For 41?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're talking about, I mean, it literally has gone from four to five years to seven to 10 years, and so, you know, that's disappointing, I know the city of Emerys is not happy, Mr. Digivani's obviously not happy with that, because that is a major congested area, and if you're there in the mornings or in the afternoons, it's very much affecting that intersection, you know, a long time trying to get out of the school, and it's very difficult. I mean, once the crossing guard leaves, it's very difficult. So, you know, I don't know if there's anything more, we did send a letter, you know, to, you know, to push that project along, and obviously hasn't done anything, but I'll wait, I mean, I'll be, yeah, we can talk, and you can read your report.
I'll definitely relay that message to the NPO, but I'll be including something along those lines in my report, and if you want to do that, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Hemel, Ms. Frank and I spoke to ask about the health insurance, because I think we had that down for the January workshop, to bring that, and a couple of thoughts, usually when we bring our new board members, the board will have a workshop with roles, responsibilities, how we go about things, and that's how we do it. We thought we would do that in January, February, or we'll do that in January, when we're about to move the health report and the things we have in particular. But we just didn't know what else to do.
What about doing the board portion of it, like in a morning, or something, meaning that we, because we don't need all staff there, that's usually kind of our times to have that conversation, and that way we can.
We could do the board workshop.
Or vice versa.
So we could go do that, if we're able to.
My, yeah, and my recommendation, if there's no, I think it's always good if we do it like upstairs, you know, our portion of it, we do it upstairs, we can notice it up there, it's a more relaxed environment to sit.
I just.
So yes, it'll be.
It'll be okay, yeah, because we are getting ready to rebid, or that's, bids can go out this year, or is that, the contract expires?
Right, okay.
You know, with that, two of those board responsibilities, Madam Chair, Tina has always some good information on some of that, too. I got my certificate today. My, I have to take certificate from Tina.
I don't have mine yet.
I don't have one.
I'm sorry, well, you know.
Four hours. And there were people that were trying to leave the house.
Oh, no, they like.
And they told us, sit back down.
They bar the doors.
It has to be one.
He did his online, probably got his certificate online.
I, no, they nailed it, I did get it, that's right.
They don't have. You want to go? You have anything to say? No. I just want to say thank you again to Brian, I appreciate you being here, and I've been doing a lot of that kind of stuff. Where'd I go? I went to the insurance meeting, I went to Christian Middle School, but that's how you see, I've been doing stuff, okay?
You got it, Trump, yes.
And I've been taking care, I was gonna go to Homosassa, but there's today. I couldn't go today, I was here, you know? Taking care of my sick daughter, so, we've all been busy, just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and we'll see you. We'll see you on the 19th.
See you Monday.
Here, for our party.
Friday, too, at Sam's Table.
Absolutely, Friday, too. After we go to the graduation at Curtis Beach. Meeting adjourned.